Hello?
Can you hear us?
Hello.
Hello?
Uh, I can hear. Hi, it's Mickey here on the phone.
Yes, we, we know that number. We've got your number.
You've got my number.
We've got your number. All right, Jeff Zimmerman, is he asked to unmute? And on, do we want your?
Hi, everybody, I'm here.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, Jeff.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have some background noise with my dog, so I'm gonna stay muted if that's okay unless I need to.
Wanted to greet you.
Say something.
Um, duly noted. All right, so, uh, this is a joint meeting of the select board and the finance committee and the agenda is oh, capital plan and warrant review. I guess we're gonna do the warrant review first and, um, I think Frank has the most things to say about it, so I'll let him do it.
Um, sorry to interrupt. Melissa, could you please send me a copy of the most recent draft?
Melissa's not here at this point.
Oh.
She doesn't seem to be on the meeting either.
She was gonna be.
She was, she said she was gonna log in.
Well, I guess if you read each, I think Melissa and I are on the same page of what's on the warrant, but I know that there's been a couple changes since our last meeting.
Okay. You want me to start, Michelle?
I don't have it.
Yeah, it's because you.
Okay, Article one is transfer the sum of thirty-five thousand or any other sum from the highway capital account to fuel account. My only question is how did it get to the number of thirty-five thousand? My one projection showed it would be more than thirty-five thousand. I don't know if they've updated the spreadsheet.
Because the remainder, as I recall, Justin, yeah, the remainder was what they estimated would be likely to come from Sona's.
Which is how much?
I think it was twenty-five.
So like, right, would you try to understand the whole amount?
I don't remember the amounts. Melissa would remember them precisely. I can check my notes.
Well, I, I think, I think it would be good if we saw the math on how they got there. That's all I'm pointing out.
Do you remember, Justin?
Um, I think the general idea is that we went through thirty thousand in six months.
Correct.
But I, I think, Justin, I did that.
The snow and ice should make it such that.
I don't know if there's enough in Snow and Ice.
Yeah, but I, my projections showed if prices stayed the same and the consumption stayed the same, it would be about sixty-eight thousand dollars.
That we were short or total?
Total. So we would need thirty-eight thousand dollars to cover, but I know that Melissa was paying for the last delivery out of snow and ice.
Right.
So my, my only question is how did, how did they get, how much are they projecting cost would be and how did they get to that number? Just to make sure.
And just to make sure I understand it, thirty thousand plus twenty-five plus thirty-five thousand is a projection of ninety thousand for the year.
Whoa.
Exactly. That's why I'm just saying like that.
Who just logged on?
I'm confused. The budget was thirty.
The budget was thirty.
And then we're asking for thirty-five thousand transfer. Um, so it's essentially sixty-five. Have you guys done any, uh, reserve fund transfers to fuel as well?
Yes, we have.
We have.
So that should, I mean, be factored in. I think this is really a pretty conservative estimate, all things considered with, with snow and ice and with the reserve fund transfer that's been made because if you projected, and Frank, I do think that your projection was considered. If you projected sixty-eight, we budgeted thirty, um, and then we're asking for thirty-five, that's up to sixty-five. Sure, there's the three thousand, but snow and ice should account for a good chunk of the winter months and, um, there was, any reserve fund transfers you made would come out of that total of sixty-eight.
No, they're not taking at all from there. They're just taking.
He said twenty-five thousand out of snow and ice. Did you say twenty-five thousand out of snow and ice?
I said it.
We're not taking any, oh, I don't think it will necessarily reach twenty-five out of snow and ice, but, um, a good, I mean, more than three thousand probably.
Oh, three thousand. I added twenty-five thousand. I heard twenty-five thousand. Uh, we added, uh, we did a transfer request for only a thousand dollars in transfer request for one oh three four. So thirty thousand, sixty-five and three thousand more plus the one thousand we did is about seventy thousand.
That's when my projections are.
I just wanna make sure we're on the same number.
Fuel prices have dropped a little bit. Any other questions about Article one? So we'll go to Article two, transfer the sum of twenty thousand or any other sum from the fire department compensation account in the sum of fifteen thousand or any sum from free cash to the fire department equipment and maintenance account or take any other action relative thereof. You know, we, we met with Sean. He's got a long list of, uh, needs in the budget meeting. Um, I didn't write down all the dollar notes, but.
I wrote down a lot of them, but I didn't.
He came up with, he had fifty-four thousand, two hundred numbers on work that he wanted to do. I asked him if the work is done by July, if we did that. Well, that's thirty-five thousand. I think he said he had twenty thousand. I think we just, I.
In two thousand twenty-three, we appropriated thirty thousand.
For what?
For fire department equipment and maintenance.
So this was what came out of today's meeting, right?
Yeah.
The deferred maintenance number he was giving for next fiscal year was twenty-four, two hundred plus forty-two thousand, one hundred for the, like, regular service, the must-service for the trucks. Um, but the twenty-four, two hundred, it was fifty-four, two hundred from the list he gave us. That was a very detailed list of all the items he expected, less the thirty thousand that's on the warrant, which is actually thirty-five thousand, right? Because it's twenty thousand transferred internally plus fifteen thousand from free cash. So it's really only fifteen more. They're just moving some from one line to another in the fire department budget.
But the maintenance budget is like the fuel budget, almost double what it was projected, just
probably for largely the same reasons.
Yeah, he did. I, I know. It's much more than we originally budgeted and projected to be.
Well, I have a question. Um, if you take it from the fire department compensation account, what's gonna happen to the compensation?
Because they have fewer.
Few people, they don't need it.
They, they don't have it. They, they budgeted to fill some, they didn't fill all their shifts, you know, the evening shift.
And they've lost, they've lost seven people.
Are you kidding?
Got to stay.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
And then he, um, what else did he?
He can't fill the weekend shift.
He can, and it's budgeted.
Right.
Yeah. So, any questions there? Are you okay with that, Justin?
Yeah, um, that's fine.
Can you hear me okay, by the way, Justin?
I can hear everyone well.
All right, uh, vote to transfer some of twelve hundred and twenty-four dollars or any other sum from the unemployment insurance account to the assessors expense account or take any action relative there too. That's pretty straightforward.
Why? What?
Because we have, um, because of changes, was it changes in the law?
Instead of taking it from free cash.
Correct. Okay, got it.
So basically, and just to touch on that, Eileen, I think it's a really good idea because it lets us transfer out of accounts that we know are going to have an excess at the end of the year and we wouldn't be able to use that until next fall otherwise.
Until free cash is certified.
Yeah.
Because that's really what it is. You're kind of short-circuiting the free cash circuit.
I wouldn't use that word.
But that is what you do, but that's what you're doing.
I'm playing by the rules.
Right, but, um, so just.
You're managing your current budget.
Managing your cash flow differently, I got it. But this is my question. The accessor's expenses account. So that will cover, we just met with Frank, that will cover.
That's Scott and Don.
Oh, that's Scott and Don, okay.
I'm Frank.
No, I mean, Scott and Don.
That will cover the shortfall they had in office product. What do you wanna, what is the word for it?
But we already, but we already paid some of it, so that's addition to the reserve fund that we already paid out.
You've already, yes, you did that, cuz you did, you sat down with them about that.
So I just wanna make sure that number is in.
This was covering that, but you, you guys already paid it. Why are, do you know about this, Justin?
I do. I mean, I generally know. The idea is that if we know it's gonna be, you know, under, every time that they're going to need something paid out of its assessors expenses account for the rest of the year, they'd be making reserve fund transfers, which could be done. But if we're calling a special town meeting and we already know they're, they're zeroed out in that account and that, that, they're projecting twelve hundred and twenty-four more dollars of expense in that account, it's, I think it's just the right thing to do to refill it at a town meeting rather than with reserve fund transfers.
Or what about like the way we're doing the other things if there is excess in an OTPS line like that in another department like in the town administrator?
We're trying.
You're taking it from unemployment insurance.
Because we don't need it, you're sure of, yes. It has to do, I believe it has to do with, um, overage because of changes in staffing or staffing jobs that weren't filled.
Right.
So there were a bunch of positions that weren't filled the entire year.
I guess what I'm saying is.
We won't need that money.
We don't know yet, but we could look at the year-to-date in like the town administrators', um, expenses and see if she's gonna need all her money, cuz it's folders, it's flyers, you know, stuff like that, right? Printers, toners. So why, because once again, even though we're playing by the rules, then that doesn't go into free cash. It's already spent.
Right, but if we know that we have an overage in an account and a shortfall in an account, why, like, just tell me your logic.
Well, why?
Origin account and a shortfall in the account, why not move it from one to the other?
Because I would keep it more in another line that has the same purpose than changing. That's what I'm saying. If we have another, like, the town administrators line that has office supplies, we don't even need to go to town meeting with that. She could buy his supplies and then change his budget next year.
Right.
I mean, I think, Eileen, the idea behind this is that it is kind of more transparent. I, our new town council said that some towns pass their budget as, uh, you know, as five sections, like general government and property services, and then they can just move money freely between those accounts. But the way that Monterey's always done it is that the account, as is passed in the warrant, is kind of limited and the accountant will not spend money out of that account. Could it, could someone get away with buying office expenses for another office? They might be able to, but it's really not the right thing to do.
Well, I think I've been suggesting if we were to move money, maybe moving it from one office supplies account that didn't think they would need it to another office supplies account was more equivalent. Is that correct?
Well, A, and B, you know, I mean, you know, when we talk about finance, you know, like, a lot of times the office and management and budget is together because it's the question of, you know, is there other departments that have these supplies? Maybe they don't even need to be bought. This is assuming that everyone's a silo and he has no other way of getting it. And I understand it's only a thousand, two, two, four, but it's after several other changes and I would just like to see more cooperation among, you know, and coordination among the departments for the kind of supplies they're buying instead of, you know, like, it was brought up in his budget meeting. Is his supplier the cheapest? You know, like, is he buying off the procurement rules? I just think that by doing this, we are, and it's a small number, but once again, going to transparency and best practice, that we're just taking something that hasn't worked and embedding it into the system. So.
I guess I, I feel better about moving something that we know we don't need to a place we're pretty sure we need it than.
I'll just remind you of what we were talking about earlier, which is, so we're trying to implement better systems and it's not all gonna be this way. I mean, whatever we see on this warrant, we never wanna see it again.
I agree with that and let him go. Let's move on.
All right, uh, the town will vote to transfer the sum of five thousand, four hundred and nine dollars or any other sum unemployment insurance account to the building inspector wages account.
Did Melissa agree with you on that one? So basically, the building inspectors' hours are, um, he has documented them as being significantly beyond the original projection. There's more work. Basically, he does inspections on-site on-demand.
This is Don.
Mm-hmm, and it's based on the number of applications, and if the number of application goes up, the number of inspections goes up, right? So the good news is, as I understand it, that department typically brings in more money than spends, but we still have to allocate the money for his wages. And.
And we'll pay that local receipt?
Yes, and we can't just say, oh, it's fine, just wait till the new year, because there's a timer ticking on those inspections. So it has to be done timely and nobody thinks it's okay for Don to be not paid for his work, so.
Okay.
Would that sum it up, Justin?
That, that is different from my understanding. I think, I think the way that Don had always been doing it was he put in, I think it was for fourteen hours a week, every week. So it was almost a kind of salaried position, although it wasn't technically salaried. And once he was put onto the time clock system, it was quickly, I mean, I don't think this was news to him, um, but it was news to the town that he was working at, be it more than fourteen hours a week.
Yeah.
Uh, and so this is as a result of the change to the time clock system.
Okay, and just, we understand that, but like, we see that a few places, so that's like what we're trying to get at, just as a reminder to the select board with the capital policy, that when you make a change, there are other expenses that bust out, and we on the finance committee are trying to really identify those earlier so we can consider them instead of having to go to town meeting, like Michelle said, we never want to see it listed again, right?
Okay, so everybody's in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Slash and burn.
All right, Michelle will transfer the sum of twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents from the unemployment to pay a bill of a prior year.
But for who? I think that's the cemetery commission.
Do you know what the twenty-nine dollar and thirty-one is in Article six? It doesn't say.
Um, I don't, I don't know. We can ask Melissa. Basically, it's just when the, you know, when they're closing out, out the books, I think this was discovered. Um, basically, this probably would have waited until the annual town meeting. It's not like the town needs the twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents really to balance the buck, but.
Um, you skipped Article five, the COMCOM.
Yeah.
Oh, I did, okay. Oh, yeah, I did, didn't I? Okay, go on, I skipped one. This is Article five, will transfer the sum of fifty-two, fifty or any other sum from free cash to conservation commission agent wages account.
It actually establishes a new account.
Yeah, and that's at thirty-five dollars an hour, right, Justin?
What, a new account?
This is at the requested thirty-five dollars an hour, um, which is not something that the select board has decided on yet. It's a request from the conservation commission to increase the agent's wages to thirty-five dollars an hour. Um, and I think the unexpected part of this here is just that the CONCOM has kind of evolved over the past decade from not having an agent to going through a number of different agents and a number of different commissioners, and it's reached somewhat of an equilibrium at this point. And so now we kind of know what, what we're expected to pay an agent and it's not gonna be able to come out of the revolving fund. So if we wanna keep having an agent, um, it really shouldn't come out of the revolving fund. And so we're gonna need to create a new, new account to pay them. The thirty-five dollars an hour is kind of a different question whether we wanna increase the wage to thirty-five dollars an hour for the agent.
I think, so I, a couple of additions to what Justin said, which is that, and again, correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, so, as you guys, yeah, I can actually send you the CONCOM set, did they send it to you guys too? The long, there's a long letter. They're suggesting raising a bunch of fees. They have like fees in other towns. There's a whole bunch of stuff. They also have a pull packet on the agent's wages and, um, both of those are in there. They did their due diligence, cuz they had come to us before and we asked them for, for those things to look at both the fee structure. Um, also, the money in the revolving fund that had been being used to pay the agent actually is pegged for only one type. Is it NOIs? I always get them.
Notice of intent or something?
There, there's like three different types of applications, and there's one type of application that goes into that revolving fund. And it's only supposed to be used to pay the agent for those, but she actually works on all three types. So there's a transparency issue there. Um, and she, you know, they haven't given a raise. And so number one, she, there was more work than she could do in the hours they had to pay her. Number two, they were paying her for all three types of work out of accountment. One, maybe they weren't, but that was my impression. And three, she needs more hours and she needs a pay raise because otherwise she's going to leave and we will not have an agent.
I, I think that makes sense, and I, I just, we talked about this a little before and we, I like that, you know, this is a problem we're fixing. It didn't exist before based on a new condition. That's good. Our concern is, even though they've done the due diligence, do the conservation committee fees, how much are we subsidizing them? Are we, is all this passed through? So we just wanna make sure that that is.
Yet to be ascertained. We'll be deciding on it tomorrow.
But that's both would be our question.
Also say, pretty much every other town does have a line item.
No, we're okay with the line item.
Just letting you know that it's not, it wouldn't just be us. We won't be unique.
No, but that's not our concern.
Subsidizing it.
Well, but, right, but that's the question. It, we don't know if we're unique. We don't know how much they collect and if they are subsidizing or not.
We don't know about that part, but we do know that other towns have line items specifically to pay.
That doesn't mean they're subsidizing that though. So that's, I think we would like to, because obviously, this is something that, you know, it's changing our landscape. There's a reason it exists, and if you're going through that process, you're usually hiring your own people and an architect, so we wanna make sure that our fees are, what?
An architect? Oh, you mean if you're building something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, we wanna make sure that our fees are reflective of, of the weight of that process and, and do, and is not subsidized by, by the town because you're doing a building project.
And if you haven't, let me know if you guys haven't received the packet. I'm happy to forward it to you.
If you could do that.
It's pretty, it, it's pretty thorough, and my impression, correct me again if you had a different impression, Justin, was that ours would actually be on the high end of fees.
That's okay, because think about the value of our houses are on the high end.
I'm not saying that's not true. I'm just saying we definitely would be at or above the average concerning what other towns are paying from my look at that data. I don't know if Justin's analysis is something.
I'm not sure that's the right analysis, Susan, because basically if you go through.
I have a problem with that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not saying it's a problem. I'm just.
I'm thinking of the EQV and the value of our houses, our application should be much, you know.
I was not saying it was a problem.
Look for hardship. I'm just looking at what the fee schedule is compared to the other towns and where we're at. That's all. That's okay. Okay, so are we going on to the library wages account?
Before we do, um, I can let you know what each town appropriates base, appropriates based on the co, what the CONCOM sent us. And although maybe not as a rule, but I think as a, generally, the fact that the towns are appropriating this money probably means that, you know, they're, they're collecting this money through taxes, so it's not being covered through a revolving fund based on fees. Beckett is twenty thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Otis is fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty. In sale is seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five. Barrington is thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven. Lee is four thousand, two hundred, and Richmond is twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen.
So, right, we really need to look at those numbers against the budget and the receipts and to figure out if the math is working for us or against us is what we're.
Well, it's absolutely working against us, Eileen. So when the CONCOM came to us about half a year ago, at our last special town meeting and said, we want money to pay our agent, we asked them to raise their fees, and they have recommended to the select board a new fee schedule, which is actually their purview, as far as I understand it, to raise the fees, but, um, what, what happened was that revolving fund was built up over, over the course of years without having an agent, I believe, and all that we've been doing over the past few years with an agent is depleting it. And it's pretty clear that, no, I mean, unless we were to, I mean, you could do all the math if you had the Excel sheet, but everything I understand it, the town's very much on the losing end and has to subsidize the, the, um, CONCOM agent by quite a bit. But you could, you could find out the price point at which the fees would cover the agent's work, but it seems like it's pretty, pretty, pretty high compared to what we have. And our, and like Susan said, if you look at all those other towns' fees, uh, what the CONCOM is recommending is higher than most of the other towns. It's definitely the higher end of the range.
Yeah, I mean, look, this is all okay. We're just raising systemic issues that are going to continue to put us in a, um, structural imbalance moving forward, right?
I, I think, I actually think this is gonna put us in a structural balance going forward.
This is helping us, yes, overall, right? Yeah, no, that's why I said this is a good step in the right direction. I'm sorry, I'm making.
Well, I, I, I would tend to agree with Eileen, though, that the agent position should probably fund itself through fees. Why is the whole tax base, you know, paying for an agent just when the agent does work on people's specific projects? Um, like, other people have mentioned Don's, the building fees we get in far exceed what we pay the building inspector.
Right, that's okay. Thank you.
We could run those numbers, but I think it would be involved increasing the fees by, by many times, so, anyway.
Move towards it. This is a step in the right direction. That's all we're suggesting.
One last point on this. I think that we can take the money from the health insurance account rather than free cash. Um, in the line of taking from accounts that we know are gonna have an excess rather than free cash, um, we're gonna have extra money in the health insurance account because it sounds like two new full-time positions that we hired are not going to take, uh, are not going to sign up for the health insurance plan. Um, so we should have it overage there by quite a bit. So I think we could take this money from the health insurance account.
Work your hard people that do. Not, it won't be reflected in the right, in the correct timing. I mean, we've already not spent.
Okay.
So, uh, does that mean you're going to rewrite this warrant?
No, we can always change it.
On the floor?
Yeah, okay.
I think, well, I don't know, there's no reason we can't change it right now. I think we absolutely are gonna change it because we'll probably put below us is typical whether the finance committee and select board approve or disapprove of each article. We're not, the, the one that you're holding is not the final version.
Right. So what are you suggesting we take the COMCOM agent wages money from?
From the health insurance account.
Okay.
And, um, the, a little bit of detail on that. So last year, between la, this year and last year, we bumped the health insurance up by eighteen, eight oh nine, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and twenty-three cents, which part of that is how, I believe, health insurance going up, but part because we thought we had two more uh, policies, and then two new full-time employees that we hired did not wanna sign up for, which doesn't mean we should take that out of the regular budget because we may, this year or in the future at some point, someone else may take that position that wants the, that wants the plan. Uh, but I think it would be safe to, to take, Melissa told me she thinks that there's about fourteen thousand dollars gonna be left over. I don't think we should take all fourteen because maybe a few months in, I mean, we still have six months left in the fiscal year. Maybe a few months in, one of those full-time employees leaves and the person who takes their place wants the health insurance plan. Um, but I, I think that we could take five thousand from it safely.
I agree. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, so are we done then with Article five?
Done with five.
And we're done with six.
And we're done with six. And we're, we're done with seven, right?
Yes, I read seven. We wanna move on to eight.
Yeah, I'd just like to say Mickey spent more of her time than the four hundred dollars, so thank you, Mickey, for staying on that.
Good thing we weren't paying her back.
Yeah, good thing we weren't paying Mickey.
Okay, uh, town will vote to transfer the sum of thirty thousand for cash to litigation fees and expense account. That's for.
That's for you.
That's for you, isn't it, Justin?
Yep, uh, yes. Uh, so do you want some background on that or do you understand? Uh, yes. Uh, so do you want some background on that or do you understand it?
Well, it's, it's a nightmare.
Going to the Supreme Court of the state, right?
Yes.
They took it. It wasn't even, the appellate court was going to hear it and the Supreme Court was like, no, we want that one.
Really?
And there's even no.
What is this going to be a religious freedom issue? Oh my God.
And, and there's no like kind of agreement that we would allow if there were certain checks and balances like this? No.
There's no way to make, uh, like, there's no way to make a check and balance. Basically what the, as I understand what the land court said, they're, they're, they're allowed to have people use RVs for relig, if they're there for religious purposes, but not if they're staff or just vacationers. There is zero mechanism for enforcement. We can't, what are we going to do? Send someone up to knock on every door and say, are you here for religious purposes?
Well, if, if we're sending them to the parks department for the beach, we can send them up there.
Literally completely unenforceable. Because it was a split decision. So they, they wanted to have multiple kinds and the court said, no, but you can't have religious ones. They're, they're contesting it because they want to be able to have all of that. And we're contesting it because it's unenforceable.
Can I ask, uh, this is for another topic and I'll shut up, but can we charge him a fee for it? Is there a way we can do, there's nothing we can do?
Set up a toll going up.
Like, is there any way we could?
So, I mean, we could, we could seek settlement. You know, without going into details on that. I mean, we could seek settlement or we could withdraw, but the Slack board met with town council a couple of weeks ago and made the decision to have town council go, go to the Massachusetts Supreme Court. So we've kind of already had those considerations, you know, in some way.
And, and this is really not for this, but I love this kind of community organizing stuff. And are there other towns that have faced similar things that would follow amicus, our lawyers on that?
There is, the court has opened the, like, we stipulated in the original case that Dover amendment, which is the religious exemption, uh, that they qualified for it. However, the Supreme Court has brought that into question. So it's, the lawyer, as I understand it, a recent communication from her is that she is inquiring as to whether even we can file a brief on that because we stipulated in the first case. So she thought maybe we couldn't. We know that they've opened it to amicus briefs.
Good.
What we don't know is who might file or whether in fact it turns out since the Supreme Court's asking for it, we can now file a brief on that too. Would you say I summarized that correctly?
What grounds would we file a brief on?
That they don't actually qualify.
Because they're just masquerading as a religious organization?
The Dover amendment has specific bars you have to meet to qualify and there's some question as to whether they do. Otherwise, I don't think.
But don't we have the right to protect our land and water and, and life's, life here?
Not if they're a religious group, apparently.
Right. Which is why the amicus.
Ah, Tammy Faye, you were so much more.
No, but I'm saying in, in these, you know, just from my experience in these kind of things, like community organizing, it's a very important aspect. And you, you know, so make sure that our lawyer is kind of orchestrating, especially if it's going to the Supreme Court of the state. You know, we want to get some good op-eds in.
We're all going to go there and wear masks.
Do you understand what I'm saying? We want to, but some good op-ed, some other examples. It's, it's very important to get the debate out there. I'm just saying.
You mean the PR angle?
Although it's not a jury, it's a
Right, but.
Panel of judges.
That's what I'm trying to say, you know, like. You want them to know people are looking, they care, like, we're worried about our roads, our maintenance, the extra fees, you know, the, the carbon dioxide. The, you know.
Right, they don't pay anything.
Nothing at all. Right, and yet it costs us.
They give like a hundred dollars to the community center.
And they, and they do the hot dogs at the annual parade.
Yeah, they're great neighbors.
So in other words, where?
Sorry?
I see Ken, that's why his hand up, I don't know.
Ken, I didn't see you. Where are you? I don't even see that you're. I don't see his hand.
I just, I just wanted to say that someone, someone should be reaching out to MMA. They were very, they were very supportive of us when the original filing happened. And, and there are other towns that are involved in, in this whole issue with the Dover amendment. So there could be two things. One, funding, but also getting information out to people in terms of what's going on. This is a major, this is a major decision on going to the Supreme Court. So it's, it, it, there should be other people involved and there's another towns involved in this. And the MMA would be one, one avenue to pursue. That's all.
Yeah, I, I really think we need some heavy weights be, if we're going to do this and there's left behind it, we should really have some strategy and orchestrate it.
So what's the timetable on this? What's the timetable?
Do you remember, it's February, what, third? Justin, do you remember?
Yeah, it, it is, I think it's early, no later than middle of February where the oral argument is to be held at the Massachusetts Supreme Court.
February sixth. Sorry, that's in my notes.
Well, I guess we got to hire a bus.
Um, I do have one question mostly for Susan. Uh, whether we should put this article as, as the first one on the warrant, if it might um, attract the most uh, discussion. But we can probably consider that tomorrow as well.
I, I was going to, um, make an overall comment that I would actually, if there's no reason, rhyme and reason, I would maybe even do it in money order or think about, you know, how people read this and why, and then think about your positioning before about, you know, the underbudgeting and why these things came about and why they're necessary. I know you get those questions at the meeting, but I think anything you can do before would be great. So I think you're right, Justin. That should be moved up. I mean.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
So why don't we do? Of money, it should be one, two, and that should be number three. Because if we're talking in terms of dollar amounts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can re, reorganize that because the Slack board is hopefully, I mean, needs to sign off on this by the end of the week. It's hopefully signing off on it tomorrow.
Both of our dollars put that first because it has the most impact on our community. Well, but the first three items are going to get, I don't. I mean, I think if it's item three or item one, it's early enough in the meeting, it's not going to make a difference. And putting them in money order at least gives it a logical flow.
Well, and also the first two are not probably going to require a lot of discussion. So that will be warmed up for article three and then cruise through the rest of the articles.
Good, a good strategy.
All right.
Number nine.
Is, uh, transfer the sum of fifteen hundred dollars to town clerk, from the town clerk expense account to the election account.
So do you want a briefing on that one? Um, basically the former clerk spent down the election account and we don't have money in the election account to pay election workers for the town election coming up in May.
Or the special town meeting? No, no, just elections.
Just elections.
But meanwhile. We don't have to pay her.
I don't recall, right, well, I don't recall if there's money from the election account for town meeting. Do you remember? I don't know if there's, but anyway, this.
No, I don't, I don't think that there is. The main problem was simply that we added an extra election this year. The, that was not predicted during last year's budget season. The one in August to elect Scott.
I also understand tree voting costs a lot more too. You know, early voting is expensive.
All the early voting wouldn't have included that because this was specifically to pay election workers and we got money from the state for that. But still, there was an extra election, you know?
Okay, so then we're on to number ten.
And, uh, we'll vote to rescind the remaining unissued amount from the May sixth, two thousand seventeen annual town meeting warrant, article five, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and five dollars for the unused, unused portion of the authorization that was not borrowed by the treasurer for the library renovation.
Basically, just get it off the books. The library renovation is finished. We don't need that open authorization anymore, so.
It's not actual cash.
It's not actual cash.
That's why I wouldn't put that one first. Yeah.
It's not actual cash. It's just closing the books on a done deal.
Yeah.
All right.
And I think there's also the indication that it helps our credit not have that open.
Okay.
Mickey, are you wanting to say something? No, just not. Okay.
What's the number you have there?
Three hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and five dollars.
Hmm, it might be thirty-five.
Okay, look into that.
What might be thirty-five, Mickey?
Three hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-five.
I think I got this from the balance sheet that Unibank gave to us. Or at least checked it with that. I can double check, but that should really be the.
I, I can check on that and get it back to you before tomorrow's meeting.
Well, I'm pulling it up right, right here. So I'm looking at the balance sheet and this one says three fifty-three, four oh five and zero cents.
Question mark.
I think that should be fairly authoritative since it came from Unibank and it was about, you know.
Couple hours ago. Um, do we have any other discussion or should we, um, you look like it's time for some hot soup and a nap, Justin.
So what I'm, what I am hoping is Scott's not there tonight, right?
No.
Okay, so the Slack board will probably vote on approving the articles and, and signing the warrant tomorrow night. But it would be good if the finance committee could take their votes of approval, either, you know, one at a time for the ten articles or all at once if you think that you don't need to go one at a time, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion that the finance committee supports uh, all of the amended, uh, articles as amended by us during this meeting. I don't, I'm not going to enumerate them except especially to move articles through eight into the third position.
Right, yeah.
And that's any.
Or upper third.
Up to the third position, article three.
Number order, so.
The only other clarification I want to make, Michelle, is because the only other real substantive change we made tonight was the uh, article, what's currently article five, the money for the conservation commission agent wages coming from the health insurance account rather than the free cash account, rather than free cash.
We, we agree to that one too.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Unanimous. And I myself don't feel as though this is a good time for us to delve into any capital planning or policy discussions. But that we should certainly, um, uh, endeavor to have a joint meeting, um, after the special town meeting perhaps to finalize our budget conversations and capital planning conversations.
Um, I, I don't know what other people's schedules are like, but maybe we could meet in two weeks on the seventeenth.
Is that a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yep, I'm in favor of that.
I can do that.
And I'll be back, so.
Can do it.
All right, so joint meeting on the seventeenth in the same format where we meet first and then you come up, come along afterwards.
At four and five.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Okay, and I apologize in advance, but I will not be at this meeting, but I think it's going to go fine. I mean, the special town meeting. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for entertaining all my thoughts.
Motion to adjourn the Slack board.
Second.
Vote yes to adjourn.
And for clarity, we're not working on the overall budget, correct? We're done for today.
For today.
I love that.
Yeah.
Second.
I agree.
Okay, so that's a yes vote, Susan?
Yes, it is.
Meeting adjourned at five forty-eight PM.
And finance committee, I move that we adjourn our joint meeting. All those in favor?
Aye, I couldn't help myself. And they're good because.
Thank you, everybody.
I don't ever have a problem with people asking questions. Asking questions is good. No, I think so.